Yeah, that's what I'm worried about.
That's what I didn't like.
Nancy, are there any concerns, though, if, I mean, some of the comments?
Well, I know, like, when the, recently, the, we lost internet connection with the town board and they waited.
All right, so we are back up and running and, excuse me?
Yeah, we just want to know where we lost.
We are gonna go, I'm gonna go find that out, but right now, my first goal was to make sure that you were back up and running on the stream. So, that's been reestablished and now I'll be able to go and find out what point we left off. Thank you very much.
Two hours and thirteen minutes. That's five.
Six thirty.
So, is that even got the break in? That's like, five, six minutes ago.
Yeah, yeah. Then we're off. Then, sorry, buddy.
I don't know if I can do that again. It's not started up. Well, he may need to be consistent. He's gotta start feeding it, right?
That would be eight forty-two that we left off, and the last words are from the man at the podium saying, "A larger community center like this, working families' needs." That was the last thing that was said.
Oh, no. Do you show Ed, is there any way to tell if Ed Krug's comments were recorded?
I don't think so, because I'm talking.
So, after you were talking, also, you broke the machine. All right, so we can, all right, I could do it fast. All right, let's, let's pick it up with this.
Okay, understood, thank you all very much.
We're recording now, right, Matt?
We are recording, we are streaming, and this is Jason for a temporary point of assistance.
I apologize.
No worries, Matt will be back with you in about two seconds.
Okay, I was gonna say, the email I got, I sent Matt. All right, why don't you go?
Okay, kind of, starting over again.
The abridged version.
The abridged version, where we were, great project, love it, all of that stuff. I think, my concerns really are, you know, some of them have been raised, but the ones I want to point out are that, you know, the queuing issue does still remain a question for me, and if there were some way to re-engineer the front yard without, you know, going over coverage to create one curb cut and sort of more creative circulation for that, you know, now that the building's been moved back, there might be an opportunity to do that, and I would suggest you look at it. I don't, you know, love the idea of the ingress being so close to Neighborhood House Road, you know, so that, that's my comment on that. The truck parking, I do think we need to find a way to provision for that, and it seems to me that it should be conceivable to do it where the van parking is now. And, my other comment was that, you know, just in terms of the intensification of the use, as against what's happening now, and Project Most is operating on this site now, so the question is, are we really accommodating kind of the immediate intensification of use, more kids, more programs, immediately? And, you know, what, what does it look like in the future when you start adding daycare and other, other things that you may not even be conceiving of yet? And, you know, if there's not gonna be, if there's a plan to use this in the way the Neighborhood House did, which was to rent it out for other, other kinds of events, is there enough parking? I definitely want to repeat the fact that I don't want to see tons of parking on this site, it's, it's beautiful, and will be even more beautiful when Charlie Mortar's plan gets implemented, but, you know, I did, it is a concern, it is a concern. And, you know, maybe more grass parking wants of being part of the answer, but I think we need to look carefully, you know, we were not guided by any, you know, defined parking requirement for this use, so we're all gonna have to, you know, horse trade here a little bit, but I just think we need to look more carefully at future use.
Thanks very much for those.
That was abridged.
Those doubling strong. Thank you. We'll go right ahead.
Yeah, you know, a hot topic tonight has been the topic of need, and I think that's, you know, something that I always feel is very important in anything that we review, because if you don't have need, or if you have the wrong need, then everything else doesn't matter. But, with some projects that have a need for the community, it benefits the community, and I think we should strive to make those projects happen, I think this is one of them. There's a lot of projects that the need belongs to a very select field and doesn't really benefit the, the community, so I think need is very, very important. In this case, I think it does benefit the community, I think there's a need by a wide swath of the community, so I think we should do whatever we can to make sure that the project is implemented. Having said that, staying on the topic of need, there's also a need of the neighbors to not be inconvenienced or have to deal with problems that they haven't dealt with so far because of this project. So, we have to be careful that the project is implemented in a way that meets the needs of the neighbors as well. So, there's a couple of items, you know, I think Tina did a great job, I think Ian also did a great job, so some of this stuff is a reiteration of some of the things that they said, but, and also, in my first point, I think Tara answered this, the, this question, you know, I had a question about the sixteen spaces that will be needed by fifteen employees in the apartment, and it's only nineteen available, and I was afraid that that wouldn't be enough, but I think Tara's addressed that pretty well for me, meaning that the employees are not gonna be there at all times, so. I think the truck designated space is required, I don't think you can get away with just having that van space with the, so I think we should strive to get that done. Some of these other issues, I don't have the answers to, but I think they're important to bring out and highlight, I don't know how they're gonna be addressed, but I think they're problems. I like the idea of two curb cuts, but, you know, like everybody said, we need to get the Suffolk County Public Works approval. I'm not sure it's gonna interfere with traffic on the road, traffic that's coming out there, I don't think it will, so I like the idea of the two curb cuts. I don't buy the premise that, of the three hundred and sixty-two vehicles accessing the site, according to the traffic study, that most of them are traveling, you know, on Three Mile Harbor Road anyway, I, I just don't, you know, I don't, I, I can't imagine that, I don't get that, and that's what the traffic study says. There is also, in the traffic study, there wasn't any discussion of the traffic impact in the side roads, the two to the north and the one to the south, so I think that should be addressed. I think, you know, the, the estimates that were provided by the traffic consultant should compare with the Institute of Transportation engineers, as you can try to address that in his comments, but I think we should get that in writing, I think the traffic study should have that in writing. Eleven vehicles queuing at the entrance, I'm not sure that's realistic, and this is one of the issues where I think, you know, it's a problem and I don't have the answer to it. I like, you know, I like the way you queued it up, but I'm not sure that's going to not create a situation where you have queuing spilling out onto Three Mile Harbor. And also, I think we should have a comparison of the existing conditions versus each site conditions in the traffic study. As far as the trees, I had a comment that, I was, you know, the comment that I was gonna make was that, see if we can save those mature trees on the east, but after having heard Charlie Mortar, I love this plan, I think it's wonderful, I think it's an intelligent plan, I think the educational part of it is excellent, but I agree with Ian, like, you know, as good as the plan is, I think we should also make sure that we emphasize buffering and that, that we do it in such a way that the neighbors aren't inconvenienced. So, those are my comments.
Okay, thanks very much, Michael.
Well, I, I agree with Lou. Randy?
Randy? Yeah, I think colleagues made, Ian made a lot of good points, Ed, Lou. I don't know if we have, we might have a survey that shows, we need, it'd be helpful to see the surrounding houses, are they shown on the survey?
No, I think property owners are, but like, the lot lines, really.
I mean, it'd be helpful to plot.
I can bring up an aerial, if I'm, I just need a second to get back into the system here.
And that, that also goes to something Lou was saying, something that was said in the letter we received on this from the neighbors, that there, there are two roads to the north, Neighborhood Road and Morris Park Lane, I think is right, and then to the south, there's Neighborhood House Road. So, I think, I think what we're saying is, we, we need to know, I know some people use, I think it's Neighborhood House Road, as a, you can go from Fireplace to Three Mile Harbor Road.
No.
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 That's Jackson Street, it's to the south.
Oh, no, Morris, Morris Park.
Morris Park?
Yeah.
That's sort of a cotton lot. Yeah.
But people, people do it, but it's, it requires a number of turns, but, yeah, I mean, we've all done it, right?
Not me. I'm learning as we go, I guess.
It's easier to go to Jackson than Children's Road, but honestly.
Okay, so, I thought Lou said it well, the trick here, there's no question we need this, there's no question this is a good project, I think the balancing act here is what is, what is fair and, and good for the community, including those surrounding residential users, and the traffic impacts on everybody using Three Mile Harbor. So, it goes to what Ed was saying, which is, what, how much of an intensification are we, I, I'm still not clear what the numbers are now, and what the numbers you're planning for are, and what, even in the future, I don't know if our approval's gonna, gonna mention numbers of people using the property, we haven't really seen floor plans yet, have we seen floor plans?
There's floor plans, yeah.
I don't know how we're gonna kind of define the amount of intensification that we're, and when you have to come back. So, somehow, maybe we need to quantify what's there now and what could happen, what you wanna, what you want, you want to be able to do without coming back. I have a question about the basement, right? It's not included in the gross floor area. Four thousand four hundred and eighteen square foot basement for storage, mechanical, and a multipurpose space for athletics and dance. Now, normally, we only exclude gross basements if they're storage and mechanical, period. So, I think we either have to add that to the gross floor area, or we have to limit what goes on in the basement.
The definition of gross floor area in the town code excludes basements.
Yeah, but, but basements, I think, are defined as mechanical and storage.
No, no, just below grade. Isn't that for habitable structures? Does it apply to commercial? I, I think we need to check, I, I think it might apply to commercial, I, I think Randy's probably right on this, and we can take that as, you guys have a look at it? Or we could further look at it, but, yeah.
Yeah, we've been, that's how we've been working.
Yeah.
Does the apartment impact that discussion?
No, the apartment's included already in the calculation.
In terms of including the basement? Is that, well, you know, it's a legal point.
Apartment's on the second floor, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And they're saying it's habitable structure that we're talking about, does that expand that, that question?
What are your concerns about it, I guess?
Well, it goes to the intensification of use, or what is the existing gross floor area that's being used, and what gross floor area are you planning to use?
Well, it's already a substantial expansion.
Well, it still goes to the impacts on the neighbors and traffic.
With our number of kids, we have a set number of kids, regardless of gross floor area, right, so.
You do have a set number?
Yes, we've submitted those numbers to the board. We have forty for daycare, forty for after-school, and seventy-five for summer camp, that was submitted with the first submission.
But are they ever there together?
There is a slight overlap with the daycare transitions into after-school, or after-care, but the forty is the max for that, the seventy-five is the max for the summer camp, that's reflected in the sanitary calculations as well.
So, how does that compare to what's happening there now?
Well, there's not anything happening there now, they're at Most Holy Trinity.
Well, so, I think we need to know, are you going from zero to seventy-five in the summer camp?
Well, when there was, when, during COVID, they were at, they were a full facility.
Right.
Functioning there, and it was roughly the same amount of children, there was like forty to fifty kids there then.
Well, that's the answer. Forty to fifty?
During COVID.
Summer camp?
No.
No.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five for summer camp.
So, I think we need to know what, what was going on there, if you want to say, pre-COVID.
So, that was something that was brought up in Tina's comments with respect to the traffic study, right, because she wanted us to compare to the existing, and we have every intention of submitting that information with the next go-around.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, what, what you've been doing, if you want to go pre-COVID, and what you plan to do, so that we can see, I mean, we're starting with a new special permit, it's like you're just coming in.
Because of the size of facility, not necessarily the intensity of the number of people on site.
Well, it's a substantial expansion, however you want to describe it. We're starting from scratch, as if you weren't there. So, I think this just goes to being a good neighbor to the neighbors, and also, I guess we're gonna, we're gonna probably put these numbers in our approval, if you say forty, forty, seventy-five.
Yeah, it's all in the sanitary calculations, too, that's what, what we're limited to, that's all.
And maybe your license from the state, or, okay. I agree that, I, I don't, I don't get how, let's say, let's say seventy-five kids are coming for summer camp, and there's a queue of eleven spaces. And then, to Michael's question, if you're gonna do daycare with six-month-olds to eighteen months, those kids are gonna be, they're gonna, they're gonna park and they're gonna carry them, or, so I don't know that we've seen how you're gonna handle that, either in parking, or circulation, or your internal circulation. I think Charlie's, Charlie Mortar's plan is too good, it deserves its own site and an arboretum. Normally, what we would want is native species that don't require a lot of water or fertilizer or maintenance. I understand the beauty of this proposal, and, and I'm just, I'm just not sure it goes, the other, other members have said, we're, we're gonna have a fence there, we don't know what kind of fence, should propose it, propose it in stockade, or, like, air through this fence?
There, there's actually, there's a split rail fence along the front of the property existing that we plan on keeping, and then we'll submit the further detail on the fencing, but basically, just a portion of the rear, where on the landscaping plan, I guess it's defined in like a, a thick green line, will be fenced in here with deer fencing, so that the landscaping doesn't get destroyed, but.
But that doesn't do anything for light and noise, does it? I mean, for the neighbors.
That doesn't, well, we can put some additional fencing on the rear, like we said, we're, we'll submit that information with the next go-around.
That's gonna be one of the key factors, neighbors.
Sure, we hear the buffering loud and clear, we're gonna submit all of that information.
I don't know if you can, you know, people drop tennis courts down four feet, anyway, it's a thought for the basketball court. So, I still feel like the parking and the internal circulation, I agree with my colleagues. Why, why do you need a bus stop there? That seems to me to be adding.
That was the suggestion of the town.
The, the planning board did that?
I don't, I don't remember if it was Planning Board or.
Seems to me.
Department at the time, I can't remember, but that's where it came from.
I mean, these are children, I, I don't know if the county wants to put a bus stop there, but it seems to me we should be trying to simplify, not.
I think that was on the plate the last time we, yeah.
It, it was requested, I, I didn't watch the meetings to, to find out from where.
No, I, that was definitely not the first, and I was definitely not the first time we heard that.
I'm pretty sure it was in the memo, the last time around.
My, my kindergarten was took the bus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not the Suffolk County bus, so.
Oh, you mean like the town bus?
Yeah.
Oh, he used to take the subway now.
Anyway, I'm, I, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm not sure we want to put a, a bus stop in the mix, but, we're gonna, we're already all worried about queuing and parking. I think that's it.
I have one question.
Sure.
So, pre-COVID, at this location, when it was at this location, in September, how many kids would be there?
We started renting from the Neighborhood House in December twenty nineteen.
But, I mean, and I'm, I'm just talking, the, the number of kids that go to Project Most in a September pre-COVID, how many? Versus how many are you expecting when this, this thing is completed?
I could get you numbers that, where we were having programming across multiple sites, but I can tell you that, once the COVID shutdown happened, and spring school went into hybrid schooling, we were having forty to fifty kids there who weren't welcome at school those days, so we immediately ramped up and maximized use, we had kids on waiting lists because we couldn't have more because of the bathroom situation.
I think my question is.
But we can lay out.
My question is, I think, far more simpler than, I think, how you're answering me, I'm just thinking, I'm just asking, when everything was great before COVID, at this location, what was the intensity in just terms of numbers of children attending this, this location versus what you expect when it's done? That's all I'm asking. Like, how much more intense, how many, how many more kids will there be at the site?
Well, I, I think we hear you in what you're asking, and I, I think the, the best way to do this is for us to put all this in writing for you, right? I mean, because you need it in your written record anyway, we haven't seen the comments from the neighbors, we weren't aware that there were any in the file, so we would love to look at those first and try to address those as much as possible, and put all of that in writing for you, so, for our next submission. I mean, I, we hear you on the traffic, the circulation, the queuing, you know, the parking, all, all of it, so I think the best thing for us to do is go back and put our heads together and put it all articulately in writing for you.
You anticipated, you want to say something?
I think that's a good idea, but I just think, I think a couple of points, they, they started renting it just before COVID, so.
Right.
They weren't operating there, and, and they're acknowledging substantial expansion, so it's not like they're saying it's the same, they're asking for what they're asking for, we can say no, it's not like, they're, you know, so, it, it matters, I guess, as a frame of reference, but it's not like they're trying to say it's always been here exactly like this, they're admitting that they're doing something different.
Correct, yeah.
You anticipated my comments, and, I don't need to add, the queuing is obviously, I think, the number one issue, the, oh, I should add, before we go further, I, I have my, a client who's been using Mr. Mortar's company in a matter that we have, but I just wanted to disclose, like, you probably don't even know which one I'm talking about, but, but just full disclosure, and it blew my mind in that room, and it's in another town, anyway. I'll tell you later. Everything that you've just said validates what we're doing tonight, and the whole point is that you've got, the public has made comments, written comments, that I, I would expect that we'll be getting more written comments, the issues that we're raising reflect issues that I would like to think that the public would be concerned about, I'm sure they are, I, I do think that until you know for sure what the county's gonna do regarding that curb cut, you're kind of, you know, in, up in the air, the, but, but however it shakes out, whether it's one curb cut or two, this whole business with, you know, little kids coming, being driven up and being taken out of their car seats and being walked into a, into a school, next to a road as busy as the road that it's on, you know, it, it, it's not, it's not a cause for comfort, so you really have to lay out what your scheduling is going to be, and that means anticipating what you're talking about, which is expansion of the childcare, the daycare, you know, i- if as time is gonna go on, you're going to have more and more little kids, maybe you're gonna have to come up with some really specific timeframes of the daycare drop-off and pickup times are this, and the, 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 the school is this, and the camp is that, whatever it might be, and it'll, all that, this project, this application will benefit from having all of that written out, so that we can analyze it in a more comprehensive way. So, I, I think it's important, now, it's, it's getting late, we do have two other smaller matters that I hope, and I appreciate that you've waited so patiently.
One question, quick.
Real quick.
Which is, which I think we need, we need, I would, I would like us to bring up with senior center, and that is, I think you, you all are serving the Spanish-speaking community substantially now, is that correct? Would you?
Yeah, it's serving the time of the year, but, yeah.
Because, looking forward, anybody who has paid attention to the school districts here, most of them are either close to fifty percent Spanish-speaking as a first language, and, so, when we're looking at it ahead, I didn't see English as a second language in the senior center, but I would think, I think that's something, I, I just raise it as a question, do you, do you get the, the working Spanish-speaking community using your facility?
Yes.
Yeah.
The entire working community.
Yeah. Is there, I'm just, I'm curious what the proportion is, if the Spanish-speaking community is underserved, not because, not be any fault of your own, but.
It certainly might be getting far.
And you're also getting, it's a really good point, but i- it's, you know, it's come on operational, and they're gonna, they're gonna be back here again.
Right.
More than once.
We'll have another show.
You'll have, all right, let's just real quick go through the questions. Should the applicant further explain the parking reductions from twenty-five to nineteen square meters?
Yes.
Yes. Should the applicant provide Suffolk County Department of Public Works input regarding the two curb cuts as soon as possible?
Yeah.
Should the applicant revise the traffic study to respond to the comments in the planning department report specifically, but not limited to Neighborhood Road and confirming vehicle trips are conservatively estimated?
Yes.
See, I, I would say, just my own self, I meant to say, the traffic study really needs a lot more work, it, it really does, I mean, to not cover local streets, as, fail to cover local streets, as it apparently has, is, is, is just not gonna work. Should the applicant confirm that the queuing analysis takes into account potential atypical operations and explain how those will be handled, with, meaning visitor parking? Should the applicant confirm asbestos-containing material is not present for site demolition, and I think they said that that was a building department issue, but if they'll do that, should a comprehensive site landscaping plan with all required information be submitted along with the explanation as why mature trees in the eastern property are not being preserved? And, do you have any, any comment on that?
Yeah, I think this is really, yeah.
Actually, the application order comes other than, should the applicant apply to Suffolk County Department of Public Works for approval of their sanitary plans, if they haven't already?
Yes.
And should stormwater plan be revised? There's TPW, that's where it is.
Oh, both.
TPW, second?
I, I made a mistake.
It's a mistake.
It happens.
Thank you.
I was, I was thinking, they really expanded their perme. Well, the answer is yes. Should the stormwater plan be revised to affirm compliance with town standards? That's a give me, yes. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Thank you to the members of the public for coming out, we do.
Five seconds, and I can certainly respect the process, I understand we have public comment.
Do you want to make a comment? Folks, applicant, the, uh, it has been the policy of this board to accept public comment on very narrow issues like, for instance, telling us that a particular corner floods and we don't know it, or something like that. So if you would like to, I'll give you the opportunity, if, if you just have one person speaking.
Yes, sir.
Then please step right.
Thank you for your diligence, chairman and the board. My name is Kevin Scott, S C O T T. And we'd just like to say that, uh, appreciate, uh, thank you in advance for accepting our comments that we provided to the board and to the planning department, Mr. Samson's department. We, uh, have faith in the process, that our views will not be predominant, but that they will be heard and considered. Because, uh, the fundamental two words I want to get out to you today in this short statement, community. We are part of the community. It's a diverse group of homeowners here, there'll be others that you'll be meeting, uh, doctors, lawyers, educators. You may be familiar with Mrs. Gilbert, who lives on our block, who edu- probably educated, depending on your age, some of you, or your children. So we are supportive of community things that benefit the community, but we also want you to keep the second word in, in place because we have the same drawings you do, and so some of these numbers have not been consistent today. Noise and disruption in use of our properties that we've invested our legacy, our lifetime. And thirdly, I'd like you to consider, as in our notes, as we've noticed, that we live in a hallowed ground. It's hallowed earth, it's, it's magic. It is, it is in the one hundred years when it was a settlement house, it was the mid eighteen hundreds when enslaved Africans were released to the area by the gardeners and given this tract of land, bequeathed this tract of land. So I think we should never lose sight of that, because that also is part of community. And lastly, I'd like to extend an invitation to you all to come over, stand on our porches and decks and backyards and take a walkabout. We'll provide the beverages, we'll provide hospitality, and we think that's important to reference the context of all of these issues as it relates to a historic community, an important community, the community of East Hampton, and the fact that this program, which we, we think is, that's fine, that it supports working families, but we are working families also, who have heavy investments and heavy devotion to this community. And we want to be heard equally, which I'm confident we will be, but we want to invite you to come see the context of, it's, you know, drawings are one thing, eyeballs are another, in my engineering train, which I have extensive background in. We'll learn to know each other, come over, have coffee, walk it, and we'll talk further, and we appreciate the opportunity to interact with you in the future. Thank you for your indulgence, sir.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Okay, now with that, thank you all for coming out, thank you to the applicant, and thank you to the next application for patients.
No one here.
I'm sorry?
No one here watching us?
No, 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 believe me, there are thousands of people across East Hampton. Which is something you might actually get. All right.
Sorry, guys.
So we have the applicant, we, I'm sorry, we have the applicant, we have the town.
You have me, yep, here I go.
And we have Lou. Did Ian recuse himself on this?
No, he drank a lot of coffee.
Been here for quite some time.
Go right ahead.
This is the, uh, G S L shop addition, the, the board has seen the application before as preliminary, as well as doing, um, a first detail review back in January. It's a site plan application for, uh, one thirty-nine and one thirty-seven Springs Fireplace Road. It involves a lot merger and, um, the construction of a building addition, um, to an existing, uh, active auto repair garage. That commercial industrial area, right, so zone C I. Uh, so I'll go right to the issues and I will bring up the, the latest site plan. Okay, regarding site layout, uh, during the last, uh, meeting, the board was supportive of the site layout and it, and it hasn't changed. Uh, a lot of these issues are kind of small issues that we remain to clarify before this gets to be complete. So, um, the board requested that the applicant, uh, clarify truck navigation on site and provide, uh, truck parking that's compliant with town code requirements, uh, from the last, that was the comment at the last meeting. Um, the applicant has, uh, marked the truck, uh, loading and unloading space here, it's compliant with the dimensions required in the code. Uh, we did want to just make sure that this is the space that's going to work for the, uh, site as a whole. Um, because currently, you know, the applicant did explain in their narrative, which was very helpful, that most of the loading and unloading currently occurs in the front of the property. So we just want to make sure that there's no conflicts and that this is going to be, um, a good addition to the site. Um, regarding another comment the board made, you know, to respond to the preliminary site plan comments that were issued at the first review, one of which was, um, a narrative of how the site operated, right? What, what type of operations were happening, what, what trucks were actually in the site? The applicant's narrative explains that several automobiles related liquids and chemicals are currently stored on the site and battery recycling is also an operation that's conducted. We did just want to come in and make sure that the applicant's aware of any applicable county, state, or federal regulations that protect the environment with respect to these resources. We are in a special groundwater protection area here, so storage of these materials in facilities that are not, that are not leaking and possibly accessing groundwater is important. So we just want to understand if there's any additional chemical storage and handling that's proposed as part of the expansion and if everything that's occurring now is occurring with the appropriate, um, per- permits and approvals from the applicable regulatory authorities. Uh, the rest of the site narrative that was provided was very clear, very helpful. We recommend that that's, um, acceptable at this time, it really gave a very good understanding of what's going on at the site. Um, and it all kind of comports with the existing conditions. Regarding groundwater protection, um, compliance with the town's groundwater protection policy, the comments that we issued last time have been addressed and we've sent the plans to the town engineer to ensure that they agree that the design for the internal facility, uh, it comports with the, the planning board's groundwater protection policy. So those comments will be forthcoming. Um, sanitary systems, the plan has been updated to respond to our last comment, so that, uh, matter is addressed and that they're still going to need Suffolk County Department of Health approval and they should supply, apply to the agencies as possible if they have it. Regarding the landscape plan, we did have a few, um, comments on that, and I'll scroll to it. The last comment from the board was that a comprehensive landscaping plan should be submitted, and it was. We did think that, um, there was very large areas of mulch around the site. We thought that that, um, provided for perhaps an opportunity to use a little bit, uh, more robust planting, to provide more screening and just enhance the overall appearance of the site. Uh, spaces, quantities, and distances, uh, should be provided where they're not already, just to provide, just especially for the buffer along Springs Fireplace Road, because there are residents right across the street. So we are interested in making sure that the plantings here serve as an adequate screen. Um, other than that, the, the species utilized are native, which is great. Um, so that is acceptable and the fencing, uh, height just needs to be specified. Additional comments that weren't from the last meeting, um, it's a type-two action, so there's no further action there. The access driveways, um, just to note that, you know, Suffolk County D P W, um, approval's going to be needed. This, this project is proposing the removal of a curb cut southern end of the property. I think that's, planning board looked on it favorably, certainly Suffolk County will too, but we will need to refer the application to Suffolk County Planning Commission for their comments once, once it's ready. Um, parking navigation, we just want to make sure that all the drive aisles meet the codes, some of them aren't labeled and it's hard to tell and, and, um, it's, it's best to have this information clearly articulated on the plans. So there's no question of whether or not the, the code's being followed. So for areas noted, please just clean the plans up, but it's really very minor at this point. So in conclusion, the planning department has agreed to the site layout, including the parking location, quantity, the lighting plan's acceptable in the last review, the small number of items that are required for the application to be complete, um, you know, confirming that there's no state or, uh, Suffolk County permits for the chemical storage and handling. Um, the town engineer giving us their comments on the groundwater protection policy compliance and some enhancements to the landscape design, um, possibly expanding the areas of planting and, and making sure that those are, are fenced enough um, to adequately screen the residences. I can put that.
I'm anxious. Does her work for her.
I'm trying to get us, uh.
So, um, just, I don't have a lot to say here, the truck parking space is definitely adequate because all she's going to be putting in that space is a flatbed tow truck, tow truck, it's not a fourteen-wheeler. Um, the aisle width in terms of the, uh, one-way through the site to go from in from Springs Fireplace and out through to Washington Avenue, um, up in the front, it's nineteen point four five feet wide, so there's plenty of room to pass those cars that are pulled in on a diagonal. In the back, it's thirteen point two feet wide, which is more than the twelve feet required of aisle width in a one-way area. And, um, Jim pointed out to me that, um, where the jog is, um, that's where the lift is, so it's actually smaller than any of the other parking spaces. So there's no conflict as you make the little turn there to the back exit out to Washington Avenue. Um, Jim Shelley's here with me, he's one of the owners, and he will be working on or confirming whether any state or county registrations are needed for the, the chemical storage, uh, the, the things that they have to, batteries and all that stuff. Um, so the, the landscaping plan is not clear. Uh, the mulch is infill because we're not planning on clearing anything that's there. This place is fairly well vegetated on most sides, that is going to remain. The mulch is just to tamp down we, uh, uh, weeds, that's all, just being added as infill. So we don't want to do more planting internally because it's going to be fully screened from the front and the, down the side where the next door neighbor, um, has already done screening. So it's, it's an L shape, it goes all the way across the front, we'll get you the spacing, we'll get you the sizes and all the good stuff that you asked for. Um, I actually made the curb cut application to D P W yesterday, and in fact, they wrote back to me already today and said, send me the site plan, so I did. So it's in the works. So that's all we have to add, and let's do it.
I do.
Okay, well then, please.
Good evening, I'm Jim Shelley, and I'm the property owner. Louder?
Spell your last.
S H E L L Y.
See, I might have had an E there.
A tough one. Part of my family does that. Anyway, good evening. Um, I just, on the, on the, uh, matter of recycling and, uh, various and sundry chemicals. So it was much worse when we were a gas station, which we were up until two thousand and eleven. Um, we had, Suffolk County says that as a, you were forgiven from, uh, going into, uh, any sort of storage licensing and requirements if you store less than two hundred and fifty gallons worth of waste oil in a portable container. So, uh, for fifty-five gallon drums sort of meet that criteria. Uh, but I've long wanted to put an oil cube in, and I think this new space will give me some room to do it. Oil cubes are double-walled, uh, storage, which, uh, if the inner walls leak, the outer walls keep all the oil in. Um, you know, other than that, we've been recycling batteries for thirty years and other different chemicals and everything else. And, uh, it is a, a thing which the company has always taken pretty seriously. I thank you for, uh, for mentioning the, uh, registrations, et cetera, because it's been a long time since I checked to see if there's anything which has been invented while we weren't looking, and I am going through those. So hopefully we're moving on towards all change.
This goes back to when it was a getting station on twenty-seven?
Mm-hmm. Nineteen ninety, Sam, you came.
It was a nineteen eighty-eight Toyota Tacoma pickup, and it was not Tacoma.
All right. But it's long gone.
I know who wants to hear it.
It wasn't, it was before they called it a Tacoma, it was just called the Toyota pickup.
New class.
Yes. Tell us about your pickup.
Well, you know, I think this, uh, application is going to be on the line. I think it might even be on the one-yard line now that you answered a lot of the questions that I had here. And hopefully this meeting is also on the one-yard line. I, you know, the truck maneuvering, I know you said there's plenty of room there, but if you can just, Tina, if you can get that.
Sure.
The job. It, it, to me, it just doesn't seem like there's enough space with those angled parking spots.
So the truck space we're talking about, to go through here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, yeah, where will the truck unload?
We use these angled spots now. Okay, they park in there on a forty-five.
And where will the truck unload? You said there's a flatbed.
Most of, most of the delivery vehicles are vans or small pickup trucks.
Right, so where will they?
Those, those are from the park stores. They pull in off Fireplace Road, they either stop in front of the shop doors, or they stop back here on the corner, throw things into the office.
And it's, and it's plenty of room, you think, to.
The biggest thing which goes through here is the garbage truck. And he hasn't hit anything and does it three times a week, so I guess he's okay.
All right, well, as long as, uh, the other thing you also addressed is, it's, which is very important to make sure that you have all the county permits for chemicals and disposition and all that. It sounds like you're, you have those.
I'm licensed by Department of Motor Vehicles as a repair shop and as an inspection station. And, uh, and they worry about a lot of stuff, the fire inspector visits me once or twice a year and goes away happy. Um, but yes, I am now going to see what, uh, what registrations and licenses have been invented and I will fulfill them.
Okay. And, uh, what's also very important to me is that you meet all the groundwater protection policy standards, there's like ten of them. It has to do with epoxy on the floor, the way the floor is pitched and, you know.
My current building does.
Not applicable to you, but a lot of it is, so I just want to make sure that that's all adhered to, so that's important.
I believe it is.
That's been sent to the engineer, your engineer.
Okay.
So they revised the plans for the last, um, meeting, and so now I've just sent them to the town engineer to confirm that, that everything's in order.
And the landscaping you also addressed, I thought, you know, it sounds like you've got enough of a buffer there because you said you've got an outside buffer zone and.
Interior. Yes, well, um, if you have the landscaping plan.
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry. I have bookmarks, there we go. There we go. So, as I was pointing out, all of existing vegetation on these sides here will remain, we're not clearing anything. But that will have mulch added to tamp down weeds and need less requirement. This is the screening hedge that we're proposing, and if you could just move it up a slight bit, um, which will meet up with the, with the warts next door, put this one up, and theirs continues this way. So it's just going to be the screening hedge, we'll get you spacing and sizing and all that stuff in our next submission. The prints. Yeah, great.
Does anyone else have anything you want to add on this application? See, that's the benefit.
Right.
All right, so should the applicant confirm truck navigation, the existing unloading area is still feasible with the new northern property parking area? On that, should the applicant confirm whether county and state registration or permitting is required for current and future chemical storage and battery recycling operations?
Yes.
Taken to do that? Should the applicant address the comments on the landscaping plan, including reducing area of mulch on the site and replacing portions of these with vegetation?
None.
None. Let's see if we go four for four. Should the applicant provide information on the status of the application to Suffolk County D P W to remove the curb cut on the south side of the site?
Yes.
And we got that, four for four.
That is the one-yard line.
You want to stick around and why just get one, you know, over the goalposts.
Go quickly.
And then some just dimensions on the plan, so it's clear that everything is meshed. Dimensions on the parking aisle.
I fooled him off the.
Oh, okay, so I just missed it. So you just, you can just email me and tell me which plan it's on, so you know I, it's on the site plan? Even for the entryway at the top of the site? Here? This is the septic plan, but.
That's not site-to-site plan.
Yeah.
My new truck is not, it's, but it's in perfect condition, sorry.
So the dimensions.
I know.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So like 19.45 and 13.2.
They're on a Tuesday. It's right here for Florida.
So what's, what's this?
The Great Race. I see my truck in that picture.
That's a.
1939 Buick.
Right, I'm saying this is what I was talking about. This looks. This is clear.
To Colorado Springs in nine days.
It's just pickup trucks and small vehicles. The only truck that comes on site is there and the cars are.
That car's got to kill us.
I measured it and it does.
So no more scheduling of things for two weeks, I'm going to be gone.
You're on the plan and then I think that theory is it.
The air conditioning is the scoop. And that window, very important to have that window.
We have, is this, guys, guys, let's.
No.
Tina? You've got one more to knock out here?
This is going to be so quick, you guys are going to.
Thanks very much, again, thank you for sticking around. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
This is an, an application for a very, very minor modification to a specification that was submitted as part of the Three Mile Harbor Affordable Housing project that's currently in construction. This is the current specification here for the refuge enclosure. There's like four refuge enclosures on the site and they're replacing what they look like from this to this specification. So I don't see, there's an approval resolution if anybody wants to discuss this further. I, I don't even know, we don't have to bring this to the board, I think.
Yeah, I'm sure someone's figured it out. This is Lou's.
It's here now, though.
Let's hear, let's hear Lou's comment. Okay, thank you.
I have a dozen points on this.
Only you could do it, Lou.
I, I think it's, I, I'm all for this, I, I approve.
Okay.
Let's move on.
Does anybody not approve?
We have an actual resolution.
We, yeah, do.
I did, I, I drafted a resolution, right, do we have it?
I don't have it on the agenda.
Oh, no.
So that will have to wait for two weeks.
Okay.
No, no, no. Randy's going to re-panic. Okay, so we'll have that in two weeks, right?
Uh, yes, sorry for that, I did it, I guess I just didn't make it in the.
All right, Randy, if you would.
Okay, in matter of the application, Penago Hill final subdivision 301 664 22, adopted 2023 by resolution. Based on the foregoing, the planning board hereby extends the time within which the applicant must comply with the conditions of the board's resolution for a period of one year, more until April 24th, 2023?
24.
24. I made the change.
As corrected.
Yep.
Yeah.
2024. In all other respects, the original resolution of approval has extended, is hereby reaffirmed. I move for the adoption of this.
I want to second that. Good thing, is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now at 10, at 10, 20 minutes to 10.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn, folks.